Okay, okay, welcome to the committee of the whole this December eighth. It's six oh eight and we have counselors Abbott, Reuters and Broughton. In the room with us, we have Pam Rook and we have Peter DeJean as well. We've got a quorum present, so we'll call them meeting to order. Item number two on the agenda or adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments or changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll forward it.
Okay, second.
Yep.
All in favor? Motion carried. Okay, third item is public participation and. Why don't we go right to Craig Doertie, who is in the chambers with us and. Craig, if there's any others, we normally allow ten minutes, a few minutes each. Participants, but doesn't seem to be a lot of members in the gallery, so go ahead.
So before I start, is it ten minutes or two minutes?
We're not, yeah, but we haven't limited it to two minutes. We're pretty flexible, you know.
Okay, this should be fairly non contentious, I hope. And I've already sent an email, which I understand. I tried to flesh out some of the issues. Craig Doherty, only general store, which has a rural retail, a Canada Post outlet within it, amongst other things. I just wanted to bring an issue to council's attention, which I. It concerns me, but it's not, and there's no, there's an ability to overcome it quite easily. Living in a small town in a rural community means something different to a lot of different people. Now, whether it's, you know, or on the edge of our sound or the beautiful hiking trails or whatever, to some of the smaller nuances, such as. Aspects that I know that counselor Abbott serious about the birds, the bees, the bears and the butterflies. And that's important to me too, being an outdoors guy and being a country guide heart. My last home in Australia lived on eighteen acres. I get country living to issues such as the ability to continue to sit in front of a wood burning fireplace, which gave counselor Reuters no riding and no doubt assisted into his position right now. I love him, who doesn't love a fireplace? There's other aspects as well, if you think about, I won't, I won't use the term site, but there's things that Lions Bay people hold sacred. You know, just off the top of my head, the beach, the marine, the elementary school, the fire hall, the ambulance bay, things we don't want to lose. I also understand that people do not want to lose the ability to send and receive mail in the, within this community. So not only do I, do I look after and have a contract with Canada Post for the retail outlet. I'm also the president of Strata of Three Center Road, where, which leases the mail rooms, Canada Post. I understand from a cradle of grave perspective, the process flow. Now, what I'll do is I'll just, I just want to talk about the bit of the history here and what my concerns. And then I'll tell you what I'm asking for, why I've come here today. I've been in this talk for about six years. My partner and I bought it off counselor Broughton when he retired. And in that time, it's where the agent of Canada Post, it brings the same levels of responsibility as being Canada. We stand in the shoes of Canada Post, we are Canada Post. We're obliged to do the things that they ask us to do. We get orders in fact, we get audit scores. Now, within that little business down there, the most technical aspect is the post. Like I can teach any young person to put a packet tips through a scanner, hopefully encourage them to smile and greet people in a local sense. Make them feel like they belong to something that's ours. But the mail is a whole different beast altogether and, and a higher level of responsibility. And in the email I sent you, which I will table after I speak, of the chain of possession, the chain of custody, whatever you want to call it. If something goes missing and we haven't followed procedure, people have a right to get a bit shirty with us. These are some of the factors that have made the mail service challenging and I'm just, I want this to be on the record and that's why I'm going to go through it. Okay, not everyone reads table documents. And in no particular order, lots of staff due to things such as simple as refinement. Counselor Broughton and then Warren Bates, who was well known and, and I think I could say loved within the community. And as complicated as COVID, we had some really good people in the community. They had to leave because they couldn't find rental accommodation when the real estate market went berserk. That brain drain is not easy to replace. We do try to cross train as many staff as possible to give it depth, but it's not always easy. There's just a limited pool of people that want to work minimum wage and put the time and effort into, into the grassroots, the nuts and bolts, the fine detail of doing the mail and processing the mail. Think about the advent of online shopping, six years ago, when counselor Broughton got into business, we were, at this time, we would give two hundred parcels a day. We're now getting thirteen hundred. With the advent of Amazon and Shopify, not just the young kids who are going online to shop, people might vintage and above are doing it as well. You think that's going to pay away now? It's here today and this, this time of year, it's particularly prevalent, okay? And, and the Christmas and general is a stressful time of year, I think people will agree. The kind of thing is it could be sent through the mail now change. You can send, you can send drugs, recreational drugs through the mail. We now have the federal government imposing SIM track regulations on us to make sure that they know who's sending what through the mail. There's a whole level of accountability as an agent for the principal Canada Post. And I was surprised, maybe I shouldn't have been, you know, the Canada Post system are coming. That's a, that's a, that's a good term for it best. In the mail sorting room, the system there does not talk to our retail outlet. The simplest thing would be the guy puts it over there, he rolls those trolleys around, we just put them on the shelf and they're done. We have to process the thirteen hundred parcels, we're getting a day right now. It takes around about a minute and a half to two to process them. So you can do the math, okay, it takes a long time. I think, I think there's, there's also this misguided mentality that time don't change. Yeah, there's certain aspects we'd love to stay and preserve, right? But no one's forever, certainly no one around this room, no human being is born with negatives. I can tell you what, so what you had, you had a mature guy with a financial services legal background. He took the mail seriously, he used to come to me, probably to you, counselor Broughton, and say, just, there's no craving, a hundred percent audit scores. And he was smart, okay? He took, he also had a high level of emotional intelligence, had standing in the community. So if there were any recalcitrant customers coming, he knew how to handle them because he was their vintage and he had that standing. We don't have that anymore. He also had two masters. He was, he was, he was paid by the store and he also wore a Canada Post hat, so he's paid by Canada Post as well too. So you earned a living wage. We, the business does not have the financial integrity to pay what I would call living, whatever anyone around this table would call a living wage. So we have to do the best we can and more than that. Canada Post, a united environment, I tried to get firstly Jacob Stolten, who you might or might not know. He's left us now because he couldn't get accommodation. I've been trying to push for once again, that role to be aggravated as one, so we had a postmaster like Rick was and like Born was. We can't do that because of, you know, the collective bargaining agreement with Canada Post. So what we've got now, I've got a good crew, guys. I've got a great crew to get us through the Christmas deluge, got a good manager, she's got an eye for detail. And importantly, I've got a young man now who is almost perfect for the job. No, he's not going to, he's not going to sing your song or dance your dance, he won't remember your name. And I'm not going to go into that, but he just has issues that prevent him from remembering people's names. But those same issues that he has means he's got an unbelievable intellect and attention to detail, which is perfect for the mail. And he loves doing it too. And not only that, I'm a big believer in not judging books by their cover. He has history in this community. You know, the number of people that's becoming more that say, do you know who I am? You need how long I've lived here, it's increasing. So his great grandfather, a guy called Buck Aldridge, we just celebrated Buffett on Remembrance Day, was in the community for what, three, four decades? This is a great grandson, still lives in his great grandfather's house. So if anyone's got attachment to this community, it's this young fellow. As I said, he's not going to tell you a joke, but you know what, he'll get the mail through, he'll get the job done, which is what we want. And we don't want Canada Post yanking the contract office. If people do want to keep what I would call, you know, a sacred institution that people tend to revere. I also think, and this is, this feeds into what I'm speaking tonight. I'd like to see this council, you guys are leaders in the community, okay? You know, you should be held to a higher standard. I'd love to see you get behind it. I can go on, I can go on social media or one, keep posting, hoping that transparency is going to give some currency to what we're saying. No, it just tends to attract people who tend to have a negative outlook, right? You tell an honest message, but someone always wants to come back from a negative perspective. So I'd really like to see the people in this room, lead, take the lead on something which should not be questioned as an attribute in this community that we should want to keep. So, and then there's, and then there's the legal aspects. Counselor Broughton mentioned my background, I've got an obligation to protect my staff. Okay, I've got an obligation to protect them from bullying and from anyone who should come into the store and found them. I can't have that. I don't want to be sued. And if I'm getting sued, then guys, I can tell you what, I'm going to be joining the party that forced me to get sued. But I'm going to, I put walls up and I'm going to be very serious about protecting my, in the main young people. Now, I don't want to get two owners, but what, we're not looking for a free ride, guys. Trust me, I'm talking to my people all the time, younger and the older are like, smile. Thank you a lot, how's your day? How have you been? What can I do for you? We know we're in a service industry, but we also have the shackles of being in a, in a very technical industry as well. I'm wrapping up now, this is what I would hope and I, I just jotted some notes down. I don't know what sort of teeth it has, and maybe it's just a landmark statement, but I'd like some sort of resolution along the following lines and the following terms. That the council of the village of Lions Bay supports the general store and the postal outlet that it provides to the community as an agent of Canada Post, one. Two, that the council of the village of Lions Bay is concerned to ensure that the residents which work in this store and post office are treated with respect. And three, the village of Lions Bay, or the council of the village of Lions Bay, does not condone bullying in any shape or form. I would have thought these are non contentious, as I said, landmark statements. But if it comes from, if it comes from community leaders, you know, less likely to have some people who admittedly haven't been in the community as long. From coming in there and giving my people a mouthful. That's all I want to say, does anybody have any questions?
Craig, thank you very much. Look, I think we, all counselors, at least I know myself, support your store and the business and the importance of what you are to the community. It's, you know, your, your store and, and the post office and, and the schoolhouse are key components of this community and very important to us. So we appreciate you coming forward and sharing the experiences. I think it helps all of us understand a little bit more of some of the challenges and, and maybe reflect on, on, you know, how important you are to the community. So I appreciate you coming tonight. Any other counselors would like that?
No, just maybe on a point of what Craig probably answered, so we had a community of the whole meeting, so we couldn't pass a resolution if we wanted. So if that would have to come to your council meeting. But I mean, your, your presentation, you know, could go to the next council.
I appreciate that, counselor, that would be great. As I said, this is a good time now for us to take stock.
Did you email that to me?
Yeah, I've got a copy, which I might be just later, if you want it, so copy. I brought up a, an unmarked copy.
Craig, is that similar to what you will email? You had emailed it to us previously, I distributed it to the council. And, and then you requested to address the council this evening, so it's, it's very similar in content.
And what I did try to do, and I don't, there's nothing sinister, I had tried to reach out to people individually, but this doesn't need to be such a formal process. But as I said, how much speed does the resolution, like it's really going to have? But it would be nice on, like if someone said, could you pass the resolution supporting the importance of the school to the community? Or the fire hall or the ambulance bay, no one would trouble with that. And all I'm saying, I like that because teachers don't get verbally abused. And firemen don't get verbally abused, certainly not within this community, you know? So that's, you know, I can't say the same for bylaw offices, but, but I, I really, I appreciate that because I think it would go a long way and doesn't cost anything.
Okay, all right. Counselor Abbott said we'll, we'll bring that to the next council meeting. And give that consideration and hopefully approve it.
Appreciate it.
Counselors agree on that.
Merry Christmas.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, was there any other questions from the gallery? I don't see any hands up, but.
Former counselor Bain or Mrs. Bain?
Any other questions from the gallery before we close off? Public participation?
Nope.
Okay, why don't we move to item number four then, review and approval of the minutes of prior meetings, the committee, committee of the whole. That was the May third, two thousand twenty-two minutes. Counselor Abbott.
My computer died.
Okay.
Well, when it died, it turned off on Craig's feed.
The strategy of a printed copy, they need it.
Okay, all right, so these are the minutes, no one else attended except me. I did go through them, I, well, sorry, me and the two staff members. I did go through them. So just if I can maybe make a suggestion that might make it easier on, on the people who weren't here previously and how, what happened last time in this situation. Just like to remind you, you can abstain. You don't have to vote against the minutes because you went to the meeting, you could just abstain. And then I'm the only vote and I could approve the minutes. It's a suggestion, but you could object to them if you like. I'm happy with the minutes where they are, I would put them forward to, for approval and over to you guys. You can either trust me as well, this last time, or abstain or vote them down. If you vote them down, of course, we can approve them.
That's a helpful direction, thank you.
Yeah. So I.
Any comments?
You approve?
Yep.
Based on Neville's participation and analysis of them, the minutes.
I'll take him there.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. I'll abstain.
I will abstain, I mean, no.
Okay, motion carried.
Not opposing.
Okay, we'll move to the next item, business arising from the minutes. Was there any comments, business arising? No?
No, I didn't.
Okay, move on, any unfinished business?
Nope.
No, okay, we've got item number seven, reports from the staff information report established of the council. Establishment of the council's committees, recommendation that the informal report be received. Any comments? Questions? That would be page six.
Actually, this is a report that Peterson was the head of the list, which was to the relevant smack.
Yeah, it was in the, the other meeting and it was referred to this meeting, the other committees.
Yeah.
And that's not set in stone, that, that was just received or presented last time?
Yeah, it's just background information for the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So how, how do we want to go about the discussion we're about to have? I mean, obviously, we should, well, it's received, it's that we can refer to this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't we receive it? Okay.
I'll be forward.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Hi, motion carried. I had one idea was, and I jotted them down, I don't know if it's all inclusive or not, but just looking, you know, maybe for discussion purposes. I thought we could just sort of give expressions of interest on what we might. What we might be interested in. The positions counselors would be interested in. I thought that might kick off the discussion a little bit.
Okay.
Unless anyone has any other ideas.
Can I, can I just ask about the standing committees first, Ken?
Sure. Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Any extra copies?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We can follow along and.
And again, yeah.
Later, providing.
Oh. You can stretch.
And if you started, no, no.
I don't know if they're his number.
Oh.
I had to come as a spreadsheet to simulate discussion. There's nothing landed on or by any means, but at least simulates some.
So I've got a question, yeah. I've got a question on the standing committees, can, or won't be more intent? So you've written, you're two outside plus advisors. So you suggested.
I, yeah, you know what, this was from probably my initial jotting down, maybe a month ago or so. So you could even cross that out, that there's, I don't think we're limited to that.
So what, what do you see as, how many counselors on the standing?
I think, you know, I'd love to see three, but now we're, of course, we're going to be looking at adding a counselor, so yeah, I, I mean, I'm keen on getting, you know, the most knowledge and the best volunteers available. So that's just my perspective. That would be heard from you guys.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm still trying to get, go along this conversation, I'm not finished. Okay, so when I'm getting this, if it's, it's two or three counselors. Are you going to name yourself to the committees, you want to be on team or you're only going to appear ex officio?
I haven't made that decision yet. I thought I wanted to discuss this with you guys and get your feedback on that. Because I think we had had previous discussions and the idea was, don't pencil anything in. I'm with a blank piece of paper and, and I just crossed that out. So I, I think maybe the way to approach it, what I was kind of hoping was, you know, what, what areas do the counselors really feel passionate about? And, and, you know, and then start there and then, because we may run into a situation where there's not a lot of interest.
And we may, but there's also a lot of work here, so.
Well, exactly.
And that's why, I mean, I think, you know, that's why I'm focused on the standing committees, trying to work out what they're, what the involvement could be or they ask. So here's what I'm getting this, if there was, you know, you know, my opinion as a standing commissioner, I would like to see the name listed in the quorum. Personal opinion, the same, based on what happened with infrastructure committee. So yeah, that would only be two counselors, which means you can only have two additional residents. The mayor could attend ex officio, which mayors in Lions Bay have traditionally done, and that's why it's in our procedures policy. I assume, I think it's been there forever, as far as I know, mayors have been ex officio in Lions Bay. But if you have two, two stand, two counselors, two residents and an ex officio mayor. You have quorum in the meeting, but the ex officio mayor can't vote, right?
Not unless the terms of reference specifically say that they can.
Okay, so we could write into, with the way it's written in the procedures by law, the non voting position, but you could write into the terms of reference. He is voting.
According to Robert's rules, that's what you can do.
Right, and then you could still have effectively a mayor, two counselors and only two residents. Because if that's the case, why does it need to name itself to the committee?
Yeah.
If they're just ex officio, they don't have a vote. It means they can come and sit in and take part, but they're not a voting member of the committee. So they wouldn't count for the two and two, if that's what you're doing.
I've got that part dialed in, I've got that understood. And I thought the only other option was he named himself to the committee and then there would be three and three, and this is the way we're talking about. But you saying he could be ex officio and the terms of reference could say he gets a vote. Would that then still leave it as three and two?
Then you'd have to have a third resident.
Okay, so it's the same thing. If you take the picture with a vote, one name to the committee, that's the same thing. Okay, all right, okay, so I understand that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Okay, so Marcus?
No, go ahead, Mike. Okay, so if, if there's three council members, whether one's ex officio or not, then there, then there can be either two or three full committee members.
They have to be equal.
Right?
They have to be equal.
They have to be equal?
Yes.
Okay. The, the, the power of the committee is to, is to bring recommendations and ideas and so on to council. So even if it was, it doesn't matter, the, the impact of, obviously, the, the impact of the vote is what's going to come to council and so on, so. But it's not, it doesn't bind council. No, what goes on in the committee is not buying council, okay? It's also possible to bring in other outside advisors and experts and that type of thing to the committee. Right, to assist them in their deliberations.
On a case based basis.
Without, if you put that in the terms of reference, that the committee can seek the opinions of external people who aren't part of the committee and, you know, or get, you know, go exploring, create task forces, whatever. You can, you can just set that up in your terms of reference.
Okay, so you can actually add like advisors. So you can layer on and just to use as an example, with the Lions Bay beach park, we capped it at ten, but we've got twenty people who are keeners, would we make those other ten? And I use that as an example, because I think those.
It was a little difficult because it's a select committee.
Yeah, I don't know, again, I'm just throwing out there, because we have, from what I see, I'd love to have, the more volunteers, the better. There's lots of keenness and I, like even with the beach park, I worry that we need notify some that they've been cut and they're, and they may, they may just lose any interest in.
We could, we could talk about, I think we should talk about that in a minute.
Yeah, okay.
But I'll just get.
This is good, I, look, this is a learning experience for me, I don't, you know, I fully don't understand the select and advisory difference and so I would love to.
But just if I can jump into the advisors, I would presume that if advisors or people who were brought in, that they, they couldn't be showing up regularly.
That's who else going to, okay. You can't.
They could show up as, for example, residents, I mean, residents. End any meeting.
Yeah, but they, but they, but they show up as a resident, they can speak in the beginning, they can speak at the end.
But they can't participate.
They cannot participate.
Unless that, right.
Even accounts, and even the councils, I attended lots of climate, I had many meetings, I probably attended most of them.
Right.
And I coached myself, I spoke in the beginning, I spoke at the end. And several times I put my hand up, but they didn't know the answer. Neville, do you know the answers? I've got invited in, but typically I only spoke at the beginning and the end. Whatever happened in the middle of the meeting, I stayed out of, unless someone asked me specifically. So, yeah, so if someone wants to regularly participate in one of these as a, as someone as a resident that's not on the committee, could show up, speak in the beginning, listen, and then at the end, comment, you know, I said that in the beginning, you didn't do it, I still think you're wrong. Here's the answer, so you can do that, but they can't participate in the discussion.
So, and do you refer to those as advisors or those are just residents?
Just residents. But I think the point we're making is you couldn't add a bunch of regular advisors, it's going to be a specific item.
Somebody with an expertise. And then that might get passed force within the committee.
If, if they became too regular, then it would violate the, the terms.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So a good example of, of, sort of, I don't know if you remember Neville, the infrastructure committee invited that expert to come and talk about communication options for our infrastructure, looked at a bunch of different things and, and was engaged, you know, was invited to attend, to present his, his ideas and options and so forth, and then to engage.
But with that subject came up, it came back, it was, it was there for that specific subject. Then it's up on another matter.
Yeah. Okay, and you were saying the, the terms of reference, you could adjust those to.
Yeah, you can change whatever terms of reference you want. And the confines of what the act gives you to play with.
Right.
For outstanding or select.
And, and the act, Peter, defines basically an equal number.
For the first standing committees.
First standing committees.
And yes, select committees, you know, you can have as many resident or, you know, non elected officials as like. The only number. Of many.
And where does the staff get into that to?
Staff is, is.
Are they additional on, like every?
They're not part of the committee, right? You just attend as needed.
Yeah.
But if you have too many committees and not enough to that, then you don't necessarily have the resources that you need.
Good. Okay, well, who's interested in the finance, can we infrastructure, our policies, procedures? Do you want to just give me an idea of who's?
You want to go down from the top to bottom?
Well, I, I'd like to just get a level of interest on this and then I'd like to have down the.
Interested, it's probably done.
And then the select committees, I'd like to discuss some of the, just, you know, what's the difference between select advisory and so on, but.
You were talking about the standing committees first, as I was saying.
Well, we're starting, just starting at the top of the page and I know you opened it up with standing, so yeah, sure, let's. Uh, well, we're starting, just starting at the top of the page, and I know you opened it up with standing, so yeah, sure, let's just address that, who's who's got an interest in the finance?
I just asked one more question.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to be clear.
Oh.
Um, whatever is a group, um, see, how often do we as a group see these committees meeting? Cause I'm just trying to be mindful of how much you can, one should agree to join, give me one free time. Um, and they're meeting once a month, which is typical for these kind of committees.
Yeah. I I would see that as typical, yeah. But I hadn't, that that's a good point, I didn't, I just thought once a month isn't too onerous, but you know, if you're on. Six committees, then it starts to get onerous.
And it adds up pretty fast, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
So is it once a month, is that what we're thinking?
That's what I was thinking for these uh these committees, I but I, you know.
Just to circle back to the restrictions that we have on standing committees, um, uh, I'm hearing from you, Michael, and Ken, that you might. Be thinking about having more uh participants on the committees, would would it then make sense to think about? Whether they should be standing committees, whether they should perhaps be select committees? Which would allow for.
Allow for more residents.
Residents on the committees. Is that an idea?
Yeah, that's a thought, um, yeah, that's that's definitely a thought. Um, you know, I see these as the important committees, and that's why I took an interest in them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and if if there's a, if there are more than. Two people on the resident side with expertise that you can imagine being included, then perhaps. Having them form standing committees is not the best way to.
Mm-hmm.
Get that expertise into the room.
Good point, yeah.
And as it, when it comes to expressing interest of what we're all interested in here, I mean, is isn't that something we should be doing in the closed? Uh, in in part, I mean, we're we're talking about selection in part.
So just one more is the same period, just so just, I mean, I don't think the community charter really says anything, but this is. I almost thought there was this expectation if you had a regular meeting. Committee had been a regular meeting about a a certain discipline, for lack of a better term, and they met every month. And um and they were meeting every month on infrastructure, for example. Um, the the expected expectation is there would be a standing committee, doesn't.
If they meet on a regular basis and there's no intention that um. It's going to end, whether it's monthly or quarterly or what have you, then it's. Probably more of a standing committee, it's not gonna go away, a select committee is per the terms of the charter are to. Um, to look into research, do whatever um on a particular topic. And to report back to council with their advice or recommendations. And then if council wants them to go back and do some more or whatever, they can do that. Um, so for instance, Curly Stewart, you know, you kind of do that on a on a seasonal basis.
Yes.
You 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 have a season where you meet, you perform a function, you report. Provide your recommendations and then you're done until the next season comes along.
So if you think about the infrastructure, sorry, Climate Action Committee. Which kind of was in perpetuity.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and then it was for for as a council term, I think it's in. You know, um. There was a select committee, but it was, but it was never gonna stop meeting unless we fixed.
Well, I think.
Change.
I I actually think the terms.
Unless we've done that.
All that, um.
Yeah.
In lines. Wasn't it twenty thirty, twenty fifty?
Okay. Yeah, um. It it just seems like a lot of the committees, like Trees, Hughes and Landscape is a pretty much an ongoing committee. Um. Curly Stewart is ongoing, Climate Action would be expected to be ongoing, and Emergency Program Committee, is that a slight?
So I think that, isn't the tree committee by by law?
By by law, I think. There's another way to create a committee. It's by by law, so tree committee and and the emergency program committee, park as well, created by by law.
Tree committee, emergency planning are created by by law.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
Uh, sorry, was that why in the emergency, uh, initially I had that as I just thought select committee, but but. Because it's by law, it moves out of that, is that what you?
Standing and.
It exists, period. Right, unless you amended the by law. Yeah, okay.
And it has no, kind of, uh, it has no.
Spire.
Need to balance anything or whatever, but it's got very specific roles in the case of, it's got very specific roles. Of who's they retains. Um, and it has to count for them.
And so what is the difference between these council, like Bear Smart being down as a council liaison assignment versus a select?
I'll speak to those quickly, so all of those, none of those are actually committees, they're not committees of council.
Right.
Um. These, these, a base one may need to, but I don't think so. We're gonna have an audit, and so. The best ones will live because there's certain parameters that we have to have in order to get that designation. And one of them is have a committee, it doesn't say that it has to be a committee of council. So I think it's okay, given that there's a council, lead person as a council liaison on the committee. That does that and brings it back to council, so that's that's kind of how it works, but it's not a committee of council. So that it isn't formally a committee. And the same with bird friend and block watch, and all the other stuff.
So the select committees are committees of council then?
The select committee, committees of council.
Yeah.
But to best what is probably the the little anomaly, because it calls itself a committee. I mean, Block Watch doesn't call itself a committee, it knows Birdfriend, but Best One does, but it's not a committee of council.
What does Birdfred they call itself?
Um.
That was a committee.
Volunteer group.
It's just a group.
Yep. Period, okay.
Do they operate like a committee, then they have a a.
They have, they have, yeah, they.
Or a chair and so on.
Um, yeah, well, I think the, I don't know, they they have a terms of reference where they define the role, they they have a chair, but. Yeah, there's one person that does the coordination, and it's just a group of volunteers that get together, and the volunteers flow in and out. Like sometimes they're more participative and sometimes they're less, but it hasn't got a formal structure.
And do the select committees, are they all uh offered funding by the villages, is that? The determine a, well.
Municipal grant process.
Municipal grant process, so there.
A lot of these are municipal, people who are recipients of.
Yeah.
Grant.
Okay. And that's what separates the Curly Stewart from, I think there's another scholarship fund, isn't there? May not be listed here.
This could maybe be a little different, but what Pam's saying is the last eleven, um, those groups. Will will typically apply for for grants. Um.
I don't know this number eleven.
This one, it's kept the best, best one, didn't really. We didn't, we should have, yes, we should have, I mean, we got support.
Yeah, I mean, you tend to come to council directly with your asks, because they, you wouldn't view that have a counselor on the committee, none of these others.
That's true, the same as a council, I would come directly from there.
A little extra.
Kind of straddles the line, the bear spot, in the past, I think it has been a committee. Um.
Uh, what, three years ago, it wasn't.
Rogers was involved, yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, yeah, I like that, we also had a little this, that, because it doesn't, it's, I mean, you know, we couldn't have budgeted this one, we had no idea. It was reactive, it was reactive.
So, um, if a committee is a society. Or that they can become, I guess, tax exempt donations and that, where do they fall into the?
They would, they would be in that bottom eleven, some of them might, some of them lost the societies.
Not too many are, but on the historical society, they're a society. They get funding from us, but they get funding from other places as well. And then others are purely just all of their funding comes from us. Or sponsorship, the events committee is a good example of their funding comes from us, but then they also get sponsorship, but they're not a society.
Uh-huh.
And the trailblazers, they're example of, I think, just all of their funding comes from us, they don't ask for very much, just for some tools and chainsaws.
And the seniors.
Senior skilled.
Yeah, I don't know what they.
They, I. I don't think they're.
Why wouldn't the trailblazers be up in the select committees?
Well, we need to contribute to council as well.
They're not, you know.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Trailblazers, they're not a committee.
Trailblazers, sorry.
It's a volunteer group who gets some money from council.
Uh, so just looking at that, uh, would the Ranger Youth Society? Uh, and again, that's not formed, but that was, uh, I know there's residents that are interested in. Should it be falling down in the counselor, council liaison as opposed to the select?
I would, uh.
Probably.
I would suggest, I I mean, I don't, I would advise that would probably be a better place for them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because then you have, you don't need terms of references, you have no um formal structure, if you want to get a municipal grant, I mean. You're gonna, these grants, municipal grants, these guys get a pretty limited, right, and often it's in kind, use of the hall and that kind of stuff. There's no, there's no big numbers there. Um, cause most of them, most of them try to raise their own funds and not impinge your taxpayers.
Right, um, the Ranger Youth, the idea was to um have that as volunteer hours, I don't, I wonder how that would. If it would matter if it's associated with the council or not.
Well, the council, sometimes the volunteer hours need to be approved, but they might be able to be approved by whoever runs that group. I'm not completely familiar with.
Yeah.
There about, it's usually just a verification that, yes, you know, they have participated in these volunteer events, I think.
Right, they probably have like their own terms of reference or regulatory requirements.
Yeah.
So if those were shared with staff, then we could look at, okay, what do they need? What can the municipality provide that would meet the requirements that they're looking for?
But there wouldn't need to be, they need to do that, I I my my gap, you can decide. That you should just take their program out of the committees.
Yeah.
If the residents that are involved, organize and let them decide how they want to run this, I would suggest, and then make it comfortable.
I think the important part there is a a society, so that you you set it up as a society to uh. Allow people to support, donate money and.
You want to make it more formal, yeah, you can set up as a society.
Well, that way.
You don't get involved with the society.
No, that would be more.
Society.
Yeah.
The historic society is probably the best example, they ask us for municipal grant, but they also get funding through their society and that, and that's separate from us.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the Ranger Youth Society could come to council and. Ask for as small as grant they wanted.
Yeah.
They could come and say, can we use the whole um without paying the fees, that kind of thing is typically what they do.
Right, right.
You're you're thinking of moving it down or?
Oh, well, I think it it seems like that's probably how to do it.
The last question is, I I I think a lot of 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 the committees, it it sort of gives them a presence to be. You know, to have a, actually to have a committee of of council, perhaps. Um. Is is there any benefit, uh, are are we saying that there's there's greater support or anything by by having it as a select committee versus a. Liaising with it, my my sense is that that um. It 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 would be great as a liaison assignment, I think it would be really useful for for there to be someone liaising with that group. And expressing our support of that group, but whether it has to be a committee, I don't think.
Right. So it's, uh, it may be.
That's the thing that's going on here too.
Formal support from the council or one of those groups, um, you know.
May maybe there's actually, maybe this last group of eleven needs to have a split, maybe there's two different types here. Uh, so the ones that have a council liaison kind of land into them. Um, and for for reason is obviously best one.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, we probably lose a a designation. Bird friendly, the designation, it means they have to have a council liaison, otherwise we'd lose that as well.
And you're saying that's in their terms of reference, Neville, or?
No, it's environment candidates' conditions to give us the designation.
Uh, okay, yeah.
So those if those need a counselor involved or on them, um, Block Watch traditionally has. Not, yes, they do have to, yeah, when we had to register with Block Watch, we had to name the counselor.
Mm-hmm.
So they need a counselor understaffing them, the Block Watch, otherwise we wouldn't get that.
Contact, yeah.
Um, I think. The rest of them don't have any counselors involved and don't need to.
Correct.
So so those, maybe you want to split those top three as your council liaison ones, and then the bottom, um, whatever we work.
I I would drop that, I would suggest drop the um Ranger program as a counselor support, because I think that one could really grow. For the young, the youth and and also help the.
You want a council liaison on that?
Yeah, I think.
So we have four that have the council.
Like, I'd be really keen on on supporting that, not that I would be the lead, but I know there's, you know, like Oliver was, Oliver and I did. Top Scouts and Scouts together, he would be like fabulous, and I know.
He's still, he's still that's like scout.
Does he still do it?
Yeah, I saw him in his uniform.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I saw him in the uniform, I was, what are you doing, you said, I'm dropping off scats.
Well, he's 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 checking up some slack elsewhere, where there were some holes that had appeared, so he's.
Hour, yeah. Uh, he's fabulous, my kids have aged out of that, but he's, um, he's been tremendous, anyway.
You want to move that one up into council liaison sign?
Yeah, so maybe there's four there.
And then the other ones I would describe as, you know, resident lead. They don't really have a council on them.
And you wanted to say?
Sorry, didn't mean to interject.
Uh, number eleven, First Nations, what's the intent there?
Oh, I don't know. What what was that about?
Um, I think that was.
No, is that a a form, I I, you know, I just tried to understand this and threw things into the table.
But.
Was, is that a formulated, I didn't.
Did you add First Nations?
Uh, but I either did, but like I say, I don't, I don't know for sure which are actual. I think I had thrown some things in there, and maybe I added it, because it seems to be. Uh, you know, uh, it's obviously growing and and importance that the recognition, I mean, we haven't had those conversations yet either about the.
Yeah, but it doesn't exist as of yet.
No.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Why, why would we not just let that become a council issue for kind of when it?
When it emerges, yeah.
Deal with it at council.
Yeah. You know, if I may, um, I think for too long. Lions Bay's been behind the curve on this, gotta gotta catch up to everybody. And start, you know, I I would suggest that you um get in touch with Squamish Nation or ask Ruth, maybe. Or personal assistants.
Okay, so I'll tell you about Ruth and Susan, but we we on the on the very bird friendly, we had to have. That, so we attached the call, we approached Ruth, she gave us some names. Um, and then we actually, on the bird friendly event, we'd agreed for one of the Squamish First Nations to come present. And she was the big part of the day, um, we were gonna pay her, um, raise funds and pay her, um, she didn't actually pitch up. So, because of the, they could have faced and Ruth looked kind of squished, you know, we're assuming she had a bad throat, sore throat. Um, so. And but when we were trying to do this with Ruth, she was saying it was be difficult to make those connections.
Mm-hmm.
And then didn't Ron reach out to them, wasn't he trying to make that connection? I mean, you said he was.
Ron was on the metro committee, wasn't he?
Doing the better.
Yeah.
As you saw.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I I agree we need to do it, but how do we?
Yeah.
It.
It it can be difficult, because they they don't have resources either, they're short staff, they don't have enough people, they don't have enough money. Um, but um, I think it's important to, um, I I can come up with a couple of names for sure. Um, reach out to those people and say, Lions Bay as a community and and council is interested in establishing a relationship. Um, and and commencing our journey down the path of reconciliation, we would like to have. Some feedback or some input from you, so that we understand. You know, what we can do and 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 to work with you on on that process, how can, how can we do this together? That's the, I think, the way you should approach it.
Yeah, I could suggest, but we did it. But Ron did it.
Well, yeah, he did, you, last council did that, that's, that's the last council, I think.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I I think we're we're at a time where I think it would be very important to have a designated contact, I think it's, maybe, maybe in terms of this. We have liaison, but then for the rest of these, we have like a contact, I think it's just very helpful for someone to say, if you have an issue. Uh, with the village of Lions Bay, here's a name, here's a contact, and so rather than, you know, contacting. I mean, certainly you can contact the office and hopefully somebody will take it on.
If who has an issue, Michael, like.
Well, if if there's a First Nations, if, for example, we had two different letters, I think, in the last minutes. Uh, suggesting someone come and do training or something, and pardon me?
You volunteering for that one?
We'll jot you in.
Absolutely.
Well. I I've got a very good uh contact on.
Oh, I'd be honored, I'd be absolutely honored to.
The guy that deals with all the First Nations, if you needed some contact, but, you know, Peter's also mentioned, there's.
Yeah.
Squamish.
No, I think picking up on Peter's point, where I think we were behind the curve, and I think in in late the last two years. Of of, you know, this is, there's an actual day, you know, the office was closed on those days. I mean, this is significant stuff happening, and that we should at least have a contact, and I just, it's not, it's not a committee, it's a contact.[1780.71] I just, it's not, it's not a committee, it's a contact. So yes, I'd be interested.
Can I, Michael, you interested in that?
Okay.
Marcus?
So.
Marcus, do you want that one?
No, you, you can fly with that, Michael.
Yeah.
And you had a point you were trying to make?
There are two. I have one to this, like even as simple as we don't do an acknowledgement at the beginning of our meetings. So we're really behind on that and that's something we could maybe do on our own. Um, but my other comment was Lions Bay Elementary School and Play School. Um, that, um, well, I know the Play School, um, we've allowed them to advertise in the village update, but they're actually a business. So, um, they was.
The saplings?
No, the, yeah, the Lions Bay. I, so I don't know if it's the saplings we're speaking of. And with Lions Bay School as well, like we wouldn't give them a municipal grant. Like I'm, I'm not saying we, we support them, but being on this list, it, it just threw me a bit like Lions Bay Elementary School.
But again, I think the same thing is would be a, if, if someone was prepared to be the contact. And then if, if the school wants to contact council or council wants to contact the school, putting a face, face to the, to the name.
I mean, you can really contact the office directly, um, you know.
I mean, there's, there's a huge, but there's a huge initiative in this community to try to keep the school and to populate the school and make sure, you know, there was, school appeared to be under threat a couple of years ago.
He's one tier from another.
And that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
I would be, I would be honored to represent, to represent pals to the elementary and.
Community, really is the, you know, every two or three grades that go through there, those parents end up bonding like.
Oh, yeah.
Math, you know.
Yeah.
I'd be honored.
They wouldn't be able to.
Okay.
Did I get one?
No, fair enough.
Not to remove them, this we have lumped them into.
I've fought, fought hard, hard for that one.
Ten, ten, okay.
Through Michael's pencil, Michael in there.
Okay, so Michael wants to on that one. Marcus, do you, well, Michael, do you wanna join him on the school?
Well, I mean, we should probably talk about the, the other stuff.
I was trying, I was trying to get a little some laying your food as they come up.
Hmm.
Do you wanna participate in the school or do you leave it to Michael? In your opinion?
I'll leave it to Michael.
You leave it to Michael? I'm gonna leave it to Michael, Ken?
Um, no, I'm fine with Michael.
Yeah, so we're pretty taken care of. Now you wanna go to the top and do the important?
They were on the roll. Before we go up there, let's just crawl up because of the bear.
So let me do, I, I definitely wanna do best one.
Yeah.
And I wanna do bird friendly, um, and I'm, I'm ready to give up Blockwatch, um, if someone wants to take it on. Purely because I think it's a, a great initiative, it's, it was a big part of our community.
If we need a name in there, I, I've got on there because my wife's on there, but I don't need to go on there.
Yeah, okay. So I just tell the others, so we have two residents that have stepped up.
Yeah.
Um, uh, kids, I recall as well as, um. Uh, Brian Ulrich.
Brian Ulrich.
Well, um, uh, a little bit have gone, went a little bit soft there, Brian, as everyone knows, my wife died.
Yes.
Um, but he phoned me the other day, basically saying, yeah, I'm ready to get back up with life and get things going. So I said to him on the Blockwatch, we haven't decided which council is gonna do it. Soon as we do decide, I'll make sure that, you know, sort of Nicole get to know, so.
Michael, do you wanna do that one?
Blockwatch?
Or Marcus? Um.
I think it's minimal involvement. I think basically it's almost.
Okay, it's, okay, let me, let me describe the involvement. It's, it's a little more than.
Minimum, sorry.
Um, so there's a registration process, but we've, we've gone through that and we've got that sorted out. We registered um with Blockwatch BC. Um, to be paid, we, uh, dues paid again, we might, well, we might owe our dues. Um. The old kind of Blockwatch committee kind of collapsed to the wrong word, but it went, went, it went into a hiatus.
Okay.
So there's a little bit of effort required and I started down the strike, Ryan, breaking the village up into, into.
I think, I think there's a, there's a whole map there, isn't it?
And there's. Yeah, but it, it, it needs reworked. It needs someone that's gonna spend some time. I'll, I'll give them the map, but and the list we got and then divide it up into groups and then get some leaders in each community and get them to start getting the blocks reformed. I mean, this, this, I, I, I would guess thirty to forty percent of the addresses on there are wrong, have left the village or moved on.
Yeah.
Alright, so there's a bit of work in the front setup. Once it's set up, it's just a coordination function, but.
Okay, ju- just to ask, do, do all of these require a counselor on them? Or somebody from council?
So I just said on these liaison ones?
Yeah.
This one does, bird friendly was, and Blockwatch does.
Yeah.
And it's me and all three of them.
Yeah.
And I wanna keep the first two and I'm quite happy to hand some workload to the other one to third.
Yeah.
I'd say the rest don't.
The rest.
Okay, so Michael's volunteered on those ones, even though they, you don't need to, Michael.
That's right.
Are you clear on that?
Yeah, no, I understand. Uh, no, no, I'm contact. I'm not liaison and contact.
Okay.
Basically.
And Marcus, you are on the Bear Smart.
I, you are, you are.
And I would. Dominated on that.
Yep, and uh. Yeah, I mean, Neville, you've reached out to me, I think, uh, earlier in the year about uh pitching in on the Blockwatch at least.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, yeah. Be happy to pitch in from that perspective as opposed to a counselor uh, uh, management sort of position.
But it needs a counselor.
It needs a counselor. Ken, you up for it?
My wife's doing it, so I, I, I mean, I, I don't, I could do it and it probably wouldn't be much because I'll make sure not, I'll say it that way, but I will. Um, I will know if it's being intended to, I.
Sure, right.
Okay, put me down on that, uh, because that's not gonna be a, I, I think it's more a liaison.
Yeah.
So unless you wanted to, Michael, wha- whatever you want.
I'm, no, I'm good with you doing it.
Okay, put me down there.
Yeah.
Um, Events Committee, uh, that, that sort of runs, I think.
That doesn't require.
Doesn't require anything.
No.
No.
So we've handled the ones that need council presence, right?
The need council presence.
Yeah. Yeah, um, um, I, and we, we allotted in the Ranger one there. I, I'd like to do that. I'm keen on that.
And we're, okay.
So, um, and then moving back up.
In, in terms of these other ones, so I, I would, I just would really support them having some kind of a contact. I think it's a, it's a really good move to say, you know, for, for the Events Committee, who does the Events Committee talk to?
Who does they agree?
Yeah.
It's just be the office.
Municipal grants are completely the office. We help them with their grants.
Right.
Hey.
Right.
They, and, and their in kind all goes through the office. That, that's been working smoothly for.
Yeah.
Right, and same with Historical Society, they come in.
Did, did we decide the elementary school though? I, I was like, that one's really important. It would be.
I took it, yeah.
You took that, okay.
It's just, I'm not sure what it is because we don't have it now. That, that's what, that they, not eligible for me to.
It's just to be their contact, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Uh.
Moving up, moving up, right?
Moving up, uh, Lions Bay Beach, we called that a passport. It's, it says advisory and I just had went slash task force because is that sort of a, yeah, a short term?
It is, well.
Program.
Short, short to medium or short, hopefully?
But I mean, it's important, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Program.
But that, that's a select committee then.
Yeah.
It's absolutely, that's what select committees are about.
So. Okay, well, so it should, so that advisory little.
Big period and it's a one-time project, that, that should absolutely be a select.
Okay, so I'm gonna cross out that advisory.
Not advisory. I think, I think it's called advisory in its terms of reference.
Most select committees call themselves advisory in terms of, could they advise?
Because they.
Recommendations counts.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, moving up, uh. Thanks. Uh, I had put conflict ombudsman, if, if there was situations uh where people were, had some real issues and uh needed some sort of independent sort of negotiation, uh, and I think of one person uh in particular that I met during the campaign, that Denise, who's a counselor.
Yeah.
And uh, just a very capable sort of person that could maybe walk some of these residents uh that are battling each other, I, wherever it might be somehow.
Oh, it's all over the place, I guess.
Yeah.
It, it is, well, it's, I'm, I'm wondering if that.
In contact, we cannot get involved.
Right, I'm just, I was just gonna go there. This is perhaps something where something would come to us and we, then somebody, whoever's on there would have to recuse themselves. Probably we shouldn't be involved in that.
I don't think we can be involved, right? Peter, neighbor conflicts? I mean, we, this has nothing to do with a neighbor conflict. Like if it's on private property and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, it's a private dispute, I mean, yeah, I, I think, or are you just coming from, Ken, the perspective of you just wanna be um, um, trying to help people get along when they've got issues or, but I think you're, you know, it's a dangerous thing to do to get involved in um, personal affairs of, of people that are warring with each other. If they've got a, if they've got an issue with the municipality, that's what you're talking about.
It is.
That's different.
Yeah.
If, if, you know, they're seeking some, uh, some remedy or permit or something and, and they don't like the, the answer that they've gotten from, from us and administration, uh, well, usually there's some recourse and generally they just write a letter to council saying, you know, I've, I've got a problem, but I don't really need to have one person who's gonna sort of, you know, you can, as a council, you can assign whoever to deal with stuff as it comes up, but hopefully, um.
Which we do anyway.
I, I, I mean.
Did, did you, Ken, did you think it was a resident, you want to assist us with this?
Uh, no, I, I was just thinking of, uh, uh, and I just threw ombudsman out, there's somebody that might be able to, not someone, but a group, but I, I think that was, that was a good point that you, we may not wanna have, if we, even if we had a group like that, we may not wanna be on that because.
No, no, definitely.
You know, we're sort of.
Could I have a stab at that? I, I don't, it's not a select committee.
But it wouldn't be a select committee then, obviously.
I, and I think it, it slides down into the probably number twelve-ish what, in terms of if, if there's a group, like, like a number of.
Why don't we just scratch it? Do we really want this?
I could come to council or if it's, for example, we often get people coming and say, my neighbor's tree is growing onto my property and they want us to help, but it's private property and we can't get involved. Like we don't just, we advise some of that.
Right.
And then they say, okay, and then they'll do other things, but um.
But if we.
The other thing is, I, I guess.
If we have a, a, a somewhere that they could go, the, the, here's a group who are prepared to.
Say this, we need to stay out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
As a neighbor, a neighbor, like it's our business.
Right.
But it's obvious, I'm thinking a little further, if it's an issue with the municipality, getting a permit, then, you know, there's an appeal process, so um, you know, you don't wanna put yourself in a position of, of not being or being accused of being not impartial when, when you hear that appeal, if that's the case. The other thing is, you know, in an, an ombudsman type role is, is supposed to be an independent third party.
Yeah.
You know, province has one, so if somebody has a real issue, you know, once in a blue moon, somebody sends a airplane to the ombudsman and they send us a letter and, you know, we respond and explain the situation and then they follow up if they deem it necessary, so.
I'm, let's scratch for now.
I'm scratching, okay, because I, yeah, I think we've decided that we shouldn't have, well, yeah.
Creates more conflict.
Part of that, lots of, look, we're creating, yeah.
Okay, she's viewed in landscapes. Who wants that one?
I nominate the mayor.
I'll go on that one.
So.
Well, traditionally it's been the mayor, so why not?
But some, uh, one of you actually needs to be on the committee because Ron was the counselor.
Oh, I, I said.
No, just traditionally gets the mayor, so that.
That's, it may not be a real popular one, I imagine, but anyway. Okay, pardon and bylaw, was that a, a committee or did someone mention that somewhere along the way?
That, that isn't a committee.
It isn't a committee, no.
It was a task force, I think, years, a number of years ago, that ultimately led to the, all the signage and everything else.
Wasn't anything.
Wasn't ever anything official.
Don't get me started on that one, no.
Should maybe be scratched and move on?
Yeah, where this is coming from.
Well, it's a, it's a controversial one, I know, because I've, I've received Leonard.
Sure that it does.
Uh, but would it be in the infrastructure or?
No, it wasn't anyway. So there was, there was a group down in Brunswick that did a bit of, I think that's probably what you're thinking of when they were working with Ron, Peter, and they brought some stuff to us, um, and then the rest of it was really.
It's go, it goes way back.
I, I used to be last, I thought you said the last council.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
No. Maybe, um, maybe I threw that in there, um, as a result of all the residents up on.
We dealt with it at, at council, staff recommendations and, and council, we spent a lot of time on that parking model.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I, myself and Fred had the idea of, um, having engage in the communities, I think that he was, he was gonna do the Stuarts and Babyu and I was gonna do Sunset and Mountain. There's only four streets for each, that have a big issue, or that was around the hiking stuff. Okay, there's, there's similar things on Lions Bay Avenue with around.
Calma Grove has, I think, maybe.
So we spoke about that, but council didn't wanna do it, so we didn't do that. Um. The, I don't know, some way to allow for the, the resident engagement, continue to encourage it. I think would be a good thing. There's gonna be a lot, there's gonna be a lot of opinions.
Absolutely.
On both sides.
Yeah, we just recently had another letter.
Well, yeah, well, one, one, one.
Yeah.
Rebecca.
Yeah, Rebecca wrote in.
No, Rebecca saw, saw your agenda and said, hey, I'm up for that.
Yeah.
Um, and that's.
Rebecca Casper.
And that's the kind of person, which I guess, and there's a few others that can name, aren't there?
Yeah.
Only, well, in the same area.
There'd probably be, yeah.
Probably be involved.
Uh, there was some passion, oh boy, there was some passionate people up on Sunset.
Oh, mountain, timber cup everywhere, Stewart all the way down.
Stewart and Bay.
Down, yeah, right down to the school.
On, on the hiking parking issue. I mean, there's, there's other things around Brunswick, but different issues.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, do you wanna keep it in there? And I mean, if we've, we gauge volunteers who steps up, who really is keen on it.
Um, we should, I think we should talk this one through a little bit. We, or we can just circularly come back to, I think, this, if we do this, it's gonna, it's gonna take some effort.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a lot of inputs and then we've got to think about what are we doing with that input? Because, you know, we kind of have a plan, staff, firstly, we created it, secondly, we adjusted it. Now we've probably done tweaking it, if anything, um, or just let it run away. These have, has changed each year, right? So that's, if we do it that way, we will still end up getting all the letters and all the suggestions. We got and say, we're relooking the balcony again this year at some point. And then it'll short have you say, what do you think? And get, we're gonna get flooded with stuff, um. To have a committee, um, I think we should spend some time thinking what the terms of reference for that one is and, and what we wanna get out of it.
Absolutely.
So, so we revisit it?
No, 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 definitely not. There was a, a parking committee when I first got here in twenty sixteen.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
But uh, it was Helen Waterson, Carl, and I forget who else was on it.
Strange.
Um, it was mostly Carl and Carl had a plan and, and, oh, Ruth Simons was on it too. Um, but uh, so there was recommendations, but uh, at the end of the day, um, Carl put forward a big thick plan and we tried to go in, in that direction in terms of monetizing parking for the beach park and sunset. So that was, you know, the, the committee was pre any pay parking. Um, and then we started implementing the pay parking in, in gradual steps.
More in COVID, within COVID, yeah, COVID.
Well, even before COVID, we had implemented the meters.
The meters and the, it did a few different.
Polys Bay Beach Parking and the Sunset and Calma Grove. And then, and then it just went from there, just gradually each year we tweak it and add stuff and.
So the terms of reference, the left committee is still around, you, you have them somewhere.
The terms of reference from it?
Yeah.
I could find it probably.
Yeah.
So should we revisit it based on what the terms of reference are and what they, uh?
I'm happy that we revisit the discussion. Mike seems to wanna start the committee today, um. I, I think.
You wanna be on the committee, that's.
Um, I, I think it's a really significant issue. I think, I think we need to acknowledge the issue that for the people who are experiencing it.
Oh, it's huge, yeah, but uh, it sounds like we need a little more information, uh, so we can.
Oh, yeah, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying.
And, and the, oh, and if we're setting, if we're looking at committees, I think this is a really important one to move with.
With, we then, well, one, once we've identified the committees we're gonna do, then of course we're gonna have to prioritize and set time.
Yeah.
And, and so on, and, and right now we said, you know, we're gonna go full on, on the, on the beach park and then, and then.
No, I'm saying, yeah, what can you say, you establish a parking grid, the tunnel will be set for you, you said we've got to prioritize it. It, it will, season will prioritize itself.
Right, oh, I see. Okay, well.
So we acknowledge that it's very.
Why don't we leave a place marker there and we were waiting to get the terms of reference? And, uh, who has interest in that does come about?
Uh, I think I, and myself and Marcus should probably obligated to be part of it. We live in one particular issue, but we could, either all of us could do it, we don't have to both be there.
Okay, but I mean. We can pencil both of us in for now and, and we can. Yeah, okay.
Uh, community input, um, th- this was based around, um. I think the disappointment that there was. Not a lot of representation, uh, with. With women from our community who are important now, um. You know, how that would translate, I, yeah, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, and I'm open to discussion because I'm sure there's gonna be plenty of. Representation on committees, um. So, uh, again, that was almost like, gosh, it happens to be the last election it was.
If we did a placeholder on that, then we had people who came forward who were interested in pursuing something like that. Then council could look at it at that time, that'd be reasonable.
And, and should, would it perhaps also be something that is eligible for being in the, uh, four to twelve group that? I mean, it's a pity we don't have a woman on council, that would be the natural pick here, right? Yeah.
Well, you know what happens with. But, yeah, if you don't have a representative from B C, they normally put a senator in charge, right? So you have sort of somebody to. Sort it out, so, yeah, I'm trying to think, I'm not suggesting we have a senator. No, I was just, um.
And again, the, the women that came to mind were Jamie.
Yeah.
They, you know, um. And of course Tanya and, um, and even now Susan stepping up and helping out with.
Yeah.
You know, as a facilitator, there, there's some really amazing talented women, um. That I think, uh, are keen to help out this community.
Speaking as the only women in the room, um, I was thinking, um, what you had touched on, Mayor Barry, is just. The committees, hopefully we'll get good representation on the committees with women.
Yeah.
Right, because I, I just, uh, a committee of women like that almost in itself sounds a little sexist. What you said is just, yeah, we just hopefully get some representation on women and, um, on the.
I actually think there was another name for that, and it was, um, it was more representative than not just women, it was for the, uh, L G B T.
Yes.
And, and I forget that.
Like an accessibility committee or something? I mean, I, I, I don't know what accessibility means anymore. Because, no, accessibility.
We do need an accessibility committee, I was leaving that for the end. No, what it means is physical access to buildings and we are required actually, it's gonna be mandated to have a.
Oh, is that right?
How are, all of our buildings will have to be accessible and, um, it's something we'll have to look at and that would be a. Committee, and I don't have a lot of information on it now, but it, it is coming.
It would require a committee and it's like.
Um, sorry, it's called accessibility.
Accessibility.
For it, right.
Give me a fortune.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thanks Peter, and, uh, and that would be a perfect example of a, a select committee that would be over a period of time until we've achieved. The requirements mandated.
Okay, so we might as well put that on the list then.
Um, it's got some very specific terms in terms of, uh, who you're supposed to be trying to get to be on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I actually chaired the accessibility committee for the, for the, for, uh, Lions Bay a number of years ago.
Peter, that would be in your.
That to the ramp.
In your December sixth report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, didn't get into the specifics, but you have to try and find an indigenous person to be on it as well as somebody who has a disability. Or is connected to someone with a disability in some way, should form either. Their family or through an organization they work or volunteer for, or things like that, so.
Yeah.
It, it, it's in the act.
Okay, yeah, it's supposed to be ultra bound, for example.
So to, by when do we need to form such a committee, uh, Cam?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Okay, but you said it's coming.
Yeah, we can get on the list and yet more.
Indigenous person nations connection and Michael's taking that, and Michael was previously on the accessibility committee. All right, Michael's thinking about it then.
Michael in with a question mark?
Yeah.
Okay, it's because you have some background in this, Michael.
Yeah, I have, yeah.
Okay.
A number of friends, so.
Well, yeah.
Okay, uh, moving up, uh, highway noise, obviously, that, that, that was priority. Or is a priority, um, was that ever a committee or?
No.
No.
Well, what it was when they did the original.
Highway advisory committee.
Was probably wasn't named, was we know it. Probably highway.
The highway ninety nine watch.
That was, no, ninety nine watch was a speed, was a, uh, highway safety.
Okay.
The highway advisory group was actually a council group.
Was always involved in negotiations when they were trying.
Involved negotiations. We ended up with these quiet pavement and all that.
Descriptive of that, because there might be a number of different things other than just.
Well, I think this, this idea of this committee was to focus on noise.
Yeah.
On noise, no reason why you couldn't make it a little wider and call it advisory committee, but I think noise is what everyone wants to.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, that's what I've got, we're not banging on doors and.
Keep it, that, that'll include whatever measures we can come up with.
Because speed contributes to noise, highway safety.
Freeze, all sorts of things.
All sorts of stuff.
And, and that, um.
I mean, I spent eight years on the highway advisory group and we were focused on noise.
Well, I know right above the highway.
And, and that's, that's my concern.
Yeah, yeah, you and I talked about it.
I think that, yeah.
So why don't we put Michael in, Marcus down there?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so Michael, that's you and me?
Yeah, it's you and me, okay.
What about calling it something like highway impacts advisory committee? Because you're talking about the impacts of the highway, whether it's noise, whether it's safety, whether it's.
I like that.
Access.
Yeah.
Yeah, people like that, yeah. Highway impact.
Highway impacts, impact.
Highway impact committee?
Yeah.
Plural.
I think it'd be singular in that.
We can even call it highly impacts advocacy committee, because you're gonna want to advocate.
That's exactly what you're gonna be doing.
Yeah.
And it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I mean, I mean, yeah, and the other topic there that's probably gonna come up is the safety, every speed over distance thing's gonna come up again.
Yeah.
Whether it's part of noise or safety, because it does, you know, it's multifaceted work.
I just wanted to point out, this, probably shouldn't do this, but Michael is reading up on the previous pavement, and you know, the decibel reduction. On previous pavement is, there are some interesting studies out of Europe, it's actually disappointingly small. Yeah, I know we've spent a lot of time talking about when's that gonna get redone and so on, um, yeah.
So one person, Denise, who's a, a counselor, psychologist. She is a tremendous source on this highway, she's studied it, she's a.
She's a counselor, uh?
Uh, well, she's a, a, a human, like a counseling psychiatrist, um, but. She, um, has studied highway noise and made a passion and, and all, all sorts of things and dealt with West Van.
And West Van provided a very noisy.
Yeah, so anyway, I was just gonna say she's got like a tremendous amount of wealth, she'd be something you'd wanna get on that.
Tap into for sure.
At least, at least the guy, I forget his name, an English accent, um, below the school, um. On Bayview, he was on the original committee and then he, he said he, even when the committee was dissolved.
Oh.
He kept going and going and arguing and stuff, he was.
I knocked on his door, um, Dave?
Okay, but you know where, which house I'm at?
The first house below the school.
Is it, I'm not sure if it's the first.
Oh, I think I.
There's not the first house, it's the second or third one below this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I knocked on his door too, and he took me, well, he stood outside, yeah, and, uh, he's got some fountains and different things and.
Yeah, yeah.
Very knowledgeable.
Yeah, should reach out to him.
Okay, yeah, Dave was his name, I think, yeah.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
Or you can go on the doors, you know, chances.
Or, or any of those houses there, or, or.
Anybody along, and, and.
Living millions as well. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and they're, they're very keen, they were very keen about that, I was being asked about that very recently.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next one's Curly Stewart, and we did that the other night.
Okay.
And I'm happy to keep going with that.
Okay.
Um, climate action.
Who's, uh, just sorry, just, uh, on the Curly Stewart, where's the scholarship in here? Because it, isn't there also a scholarship committee?
This is the college scholarship.
Correct, and it actually got missed down here, there's a scholarship committee.
That's the one you're on.
But you have the Lions Bay Scholarship Committee. Yes.
No, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, that's, I think, like Tanya and I thought you were, you on that?
I'd share it, yeah.
Yeah, Lions Bay.
Yes.
Lions Bay Community Scholarship, it's a foundation.
It's a foundation, right?
It's a foundation.
But it does, it depends, right, you do come from income grants, it does kind of loosely.
So do we pencil that in?
Yeah, but it doesn't need any, any other involvement.
No.
Yeah.
I, I will be the contact.
Yeah.
Just coincidence.
Okay, sorry.
So, yeah, yeah, no, I've, I've come for grant each year to get access to, well, this room, actually.
So, uh, Curly Stewart is, uh, you're on that?
Average is Curly Stewart.
Uh, climate action, uh, Norm was part of that and Norm may still be part of it, but.
Okay, so the terms are, currently have co-chairs. So, and if you don't change the term of reference, you need two counselors.
For climate action?
Yeah, if you leave the terms of reference the way they are, there's a co-chair. And it has established members. Um, they're gonna need, need a little bit of reaching out to, because I think they were. They were a little disappointed in what they managed to get done, but maybe that was closer to expectations, um. But they certainly jumped to your passion, I mean, I'm.
Didn't they have like a fifty thousand dollar grant sitting there?
Fifteen thousand?
Well, there's a grant that's just been awarded, it's replacing the carrot program.
Oh, yes, yes, okay.
So, um, it's actually. The, the idea was the climate action committee would make recommendations of what the money could be used for to council, but it's council's decision. Through the budget process, what they use the money for.
Yeah.
But it has to be to do with climate action.
Yes, exactly, um.
And can we compound those, you know, new?
Yeah, I keep referring to like the gas tax money, but, um, that would actually be my, my recommendation in terms of saving it, like to put solar panels. And you could get three years of, um, funding, which would be about a hundred and fifty thousand, and then you could do a larger project.
So, do we, if we don't change the terms of reference, I, I wouldn't mind doing that with Marcus.
Sure, I'd be up for that, yeah, and that, that'll, then we don't need to change the terms.
Then you change, but also one ask before you put your name down, this goes back to Ken. Um, if we do that, could we apply for Marcus to be on Climate Action Committee at Metro, would you do that?
Sure, yeah, I'd do that.
So then, yeah, would you put that on your? You're giving more, right?
Yeah, no, I can do that.
And then, I mean, even, you know, you should point out that this is the chair of our climate action.
Yeah, yeah.
Ability, I don't know if he has to give you a resume or something, but just tell us now.
Uh, so you two would be on, uh, so we wouldn't change the terms of reference.
Team coach, um, and maybe Marcus would do the, the metro one.
Okay, so that's a separate list.
Ken's alternate though. For Metro.
No, isn't it be Ken's alternate, now he's gonna be named to the committee.
Well, that's something to that.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm wondering, can you, can, will Metro allow? Village to have someone on one of their committees who isn't either the director from the.
I see what you're saying, the alternate.
Climate Action Committee has one mayor on it, all the rest are counselors.
Okay.
They're all counselors.
But are they all alternates for?
No, they're all counselors.
Okay, I, I don't.
And, and most of the committees alike, they'd be the only one with the mayor goes to organize. That one only has Ron, he's the only mayor. It's the same with the elect, uh, literally, the indigenous, if you look through that list, the vast majority accounts. Actually, I actually tell them it all up, I've, I've got the numbers in hand.
But some of the municipalities have more than one alternate director. Like the mayor and there's a couple of counselors, but they have more votes because of the.
Anyway, I'm good with that, I don't know if they, uh, we'll have to find out. We actually, like automatically get to appoint someone, or do they? Have you applied? Peter's saying is, yeah, you apply and you hopefully.
And the chair then makes the decision, isn't that how it goes?
You know, um, and to Peter's point, uh, I know that, uh. Like Vancouver and Surrey are, you know, loaded with eight votes to seven votes compared to a Lions Bay one.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that affects.
Those committees are different, so the Climate Action Committee has got. Members, something like that, around eight or ten, I was.
I think about twelve or thirteen.
Well, it might be a bit more, yeah, maybe twelve.
Cause I remember the vote was six, seven or something like that.
That's right, yeah, um, and, um, I should apply, that one might have two members, wasn't it, wasn't the guy from. Stevenson area, was it? He was two minutes, anyway, um. So when I asked the question, I was, I mean, I asked Sean Gatlin those questions a few years ago, um, but I didn't really get a clear answer. As to, I mean, there, I think you guys, in the board, uh, you guys appointed chair of the committees?
I voted for the chair and the vice chair.
Of the, of the. Of the other Metro committees, like the.
Sorry, not, uh, they just put it up, I, I. Didn't sound to me like it was a vote.
And then I think the chair then goes out and finds the members.
Yeah, we, we voted, so they, meaning as I've attended, we voted for the chair and vice chair of the metro. Of the board, they. Uh, you know, saying, look, we're looking at forming these standing committees.
Right.
Um, expressions of interest, you know, but I don't know whether we actually get to say. Yeah, we're gonna be on that committee, like I'm.
No, 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 oh, you, that expression means exactly what we suggested more.
Yeah, exactly, so, but again, I'm. Uh, no, it didn't, well, I'm sure there will be, but it didn't sound like there was any, yeah.
I think it's ultimately the chair that will decide who's gonna be on it.
Yeah, that's what I kind of got, advocate for. Yeah, right, right, yeah, yeah, so, you know, the metro, yeah, the metro one has, uh, you know, the Anmar mayor who. We've kind of hit it off, so that's a little bit of an in for us, that's a smaller community.
Yeah, all right, so you'd have to speak Marcus up.
And if you don't, then you're gonna end up with it.
I'm good with you on it.
All right.
Maybe we should reach up, we should come back to those metro committees at the end.
Yeah.
Take it as a talking on, um, okay. All right, so it's climate. Program committee, so this one, this is by Bible, so I'm just gonna give you a quick rundown, because I'm on it at the moment. Um, it has obviously the fire chief, as, um, the C O. Our emergency program coordinator, R E P. Um, and then the representative of, uh, of. Of, um, what's it called, something like?
Oh, E S S?
E S S, usually social services, what, what did it change to?
E S S.
Support.
Yeah, no.
Support.
Changed the word social. The E S S, it used to be social, but the E S, emergency services, they're on there, um. Uh, and then we invite, do we, do we, we just invite the fire, the ambulance, the people, do we like them in the committee in the end? We discussed that.
Uh, I think we just didn't.
Invite them as needed, um, and it has two counselors. Two, on councils. And the emergency program, um. Director is.
Uh, so was, was the mayor on that one last time and, and Neil, they asked that?
The mayor's name has to go as well, that's the mayor, two counselors, the C O. Um, the emergency program coordinator, who's the chair, and the other ones are me.
So it has to be the mayor and two counselors?
Says three members of council, including the mayor.
Hmm. Okay, and not the next.
No, the mayor's only.
No, he's a member.
Okay, so Ken, you're on that automatically?
Yeah.
Wish you would change the terms of reference, but I don't think.
No, I don't think so.
This is one.
Now, this is one that, you know.
Okay, so.
Catastrophe happens.
Neville, you're, you were on it before.
I, I will stay just, yeah.
Yeah, Ken needs to be on it.
Continuity more than anything.
Hey, Marcus? Um, number three.
Yeah, sure. Michael, do you want to be, uh, I'm just looking at the numbers here, I've got six. Neville's got seven, you've got four, Ken's got four.
Sounds good.
Do you wanna, you wanna be on that or, or?
Um, no. Well, well, would you want to do that when you get to the end?
No, I, I, I would be perfectly prepared to be on there, but I think, I think that's, uh. It's fine, I think we should go with interest as much as we can.
Yeah.
Okay, so the only other one, because the other three are new, so if we want to talk about the infrastructure committee, so. Um, I'm currently on that, well, when we had it, I was on that one, that has, um. Four council members, including a mayor, named to the committee, and four residences, current terms of reference. I think it, I think it should be less.
Well, at this point. Well, at this point, it would be one of.
Pretty easy selection, isn't it?
Um I, yeah, I I think we should change the terms. My personal opinion is to change the terms of reference. I would like to see it as a as a select committee, so we can have more residents than councillors and not be stuck by that. Is there any reason why then? Somebody needs to be standing, you know, I I don't see that there is. I mean, I know it does go on. Pretty much continuously. But it's only, it's only enacted when we have a project or something to review, so. I I I think it's, my mind fits as.
I I think going forward, I think. The the finance committee should be in place. There wasn't a finance committee in the last council, right?
No.
At all. I think there should be, like, finance and infrastructure should be. Hand in glove.
Well, they're gonna go hand in glove, but there's.
I think they're two different committees.
Well, they are, one obviously impacts it on the other.
Sure.
Sure, um well, they all impact on each other. And maybe.
Accountant, uh I'm a infrastructure committee that'll vote.
So given my background, I'm I'm happy to be on the infrastructure committee again. Um. But I would like to restructure it and not have four councillors on it and only four residents. I'd like to be able to have some more residents. Um and and I, my plan was, my suggestion, my thought is. Have more residents, maybe like four residents and one or two councillors. And then also go out to the community and have like a pool of experienced. People and and subject matter experts.
Skill there, yeah.
So like a Tony Grevel, for example, if we, he doesn't have to be on the committee, he'll be in this pool, and if we are talking about. Yeah, what treatment numbers, we can invite him to the committee. It's kind of what I had in mind. Anyway, so that's it. I'll stop talking. You guys can kick it around.
Okay, so you wanted to be on the infrastructure and the finance? Oh, okay.
Just infrastructure and uh but I wanted to restructure the committee. And.
And Neville, you thinking just yourself or or another councillor? What do you think? If we're restructuring anyway?
Um, I don't mind either way, to be honest, I guess. I'm just gonna make sure I can get the right people, yeah.
I don't think we're restructuring yet. Cause I'm not really keen on restructuring it.
Do you want to make it all of us then?
I would like to either make it all or change the terms and we can cut it down to to, you know, two or three.
Well, that's what Neville's proposing, yeah, one or two, whatever. Yeah, so that would make it a select committee then, uh uh.
But right now it's four, so that allows us the four outsiders.
Yeah, but if we made it a select committee, we'd have as many outs as we like.
Right, that's the advantage that we discussed at the beginning, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um it's important to me, uh and the reason it is important is because the infrastructure committee basically dissolved. The last, the last council and um I think it's one of the, it the most important and um. So I'm keen on getting that up and as as the. You know, as active as possible.
I think a really strong, really strong message is to say, this is a standing committee, it's got the mayor, it's got. You know, everybody else, if if that becomes an issue with, we need more people, I think there's all sorts of of mechanisms, as you say, to. Add additional subject experts and so on, so I I just think, I I think a standing committee really gives something standing, pardon me, but.
Well, it sort of gives the, it is a message that, you know. I mean, there, I'm, this is important.
Yeah.
You know, in our, on in our term.
Good. I mean, uh Ken, if you want to be on it, you you'd be on it, but.
Ken's gonna be on it.
Yeah, you're.
I'll be on it, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So how many people do you want to put on?
Uh if if the terms of reference are four right now, let's go all four, and then we can, along the way, if we decide we want to make.
You're you're talking about residents now or or?
Both.
All four of them, but only three, and then there's gonna be four residents, but that's exactly the way it was before.
Yeah. But Ken, if you're considering including possibly more residents, then making it a select committee would be the avenue for that.
I'm sure, or we change the terms of reference and I, if there is some other way to include. No, okay, well, then we just have guests.
You checked out, you definitely.
You have guests, yeah.
Okay, we have guests then.
Yeah.
So we actually did amend the terms of reference at one point. Uh so what it says is the committee shall be comprised of equal me- numbers of members of council and members of the public. As appointed by the mayor for a term of four years, after which a new call for volunteer members of the public, including sitting members, shall be advertised at the village update. One of the council members shall act as chair. You don't have to have four, you have three and three, you have two, right?
Yeah.
I would love to have all four.
Good.
All all four, like residents.
No, well, yeah, if you're all four residents, I'd I'd be keen on that. Okay. Uh in uh finance, is the finance terms of reference similar to?
Familiar with it, are you familiar with it?
It was kind of a video when I first started, the first year I was here, it was um. Three members of the public. Mayor. And a councillor, I can't remember them.
That one, I think, could probably be, you know. If it's, if it is the same terms of reference.
Okay, yeah, that is not, I'll those read it out. It says, it's in the report attached. Finance committee shall consist of nine in total, with three being council members, including the mayor, plus up to four residents of Lions Bay. That math doesn't work.
I think, I think the CFO had to be on it as well.
The village administrator and village treasurer shall be X F X U members.
Okay. So that's.
There was a standing committee.
Standing committee, yeah.
I can, had you a standing committee then.
Yeah.
Right, the committee.
Wasn't done correctly, that's all.
We didn't do it.
Did you probably amend it?
Yeah, we definitely figured it's a goal.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go three, uh who who would like to be on that?
I'd I'd like to be on that.
So. But we need to amend this, right?
Yeah, you're gonna have to.
Well, we can amend it afterwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not able to do anything on this.
The minimum, we're gonna have three anyway.
Well, depending on how we amend it, right?
Well, true enough.
Yeah.
You getting Lucas up your.
Oh, Marcus.
Well, I've not got more than you.
Yeah. I'm including my my uh Metro one in there.
No, that doesn't count.
Oh, come on.
And you get paid together, yeah.
Get paid, it doesn't count.
Okay, I'm gonna put myself, Michael and uh and Marcus.
Okay, sorry, what was that? Who's on?
Uh Barry Broton and and um.
Brother.
Ruder.
All right, shoot to go.
Uh HR. Marcus, you and I are doing. Some uh some work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you wanna just pencil you in?
Oh. Yeah, it is, is, is this, this is the new committee we're we're proposing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, um.
You, so you're gonna go two and two in this one, Ken, is that your plan?
Um.
No.
Yeah, we go three, let's go three.
And you want to make it a standing?
Yeah.
And then we're limited to three uh.
Yeah, I think that's enough, that's fine.
I could be the third if you want, because Michael's the third on the other one.
Okay. Hey.
So this is what, Ken, Michael.
No, that's the kid, Neil and Marcus.
Oh.
Finances is Ken, Michael and Marcus. Infrastructure is all of us.
Okay.
One to go.
Okay, policies, procedures, bylaws.
How many?
Uh that one, again, I think three, uh two or three, uh three probably better.
So this is also a new committee?
Yeah.
Yeah. What's what's the thought on this one, Ken?
Uh thoughts on this one.
I mean, how much, I mean, when I say thoughts, how much uh? Are you gonna deal on when battles and procedures come up, or are you, are you gonna go and do, are you thinking this committee is gonna go? Review all of them and have a fresh look at it?
It's gonna review and then monitor on an ongoing basis.
I'd be interested, Mel.
All right, don't we do this at council already? I mean, do we need another separate committee for this?
Well, everything would come to council, but I think what Ken's saying wants to give a committee to have a look at them.
Marcus. We put you down on that?
Um. Yeah, so.
I'll pencil you in.
Want to go with two? I mean, if you want to go with, if you, if you don't want to, there needs to be an interest, I think, if on this committee, it's.
Yeah, I I could go with it there. Go with two, I mean, everything, but every recommendation has to come to council, and certainly a bylaw change is gonna go through this morning.
Yeah, it's okay.
So then, then you'd only have two residents.
You only have two residents.
Yeah.
Yeah. But again, you could bring in, you know, if somebody focused on something, you could bring in somebody else.
Okay, so it's Ken and Michael and then we'll.
Yeah, and if we find that that's.
All right.
So we got a four, two, three, so.
Okay.
That's good.
Um. Strategic planning and budget, all of us are on those?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
It is a whole.
We're all on both of those.
Yeah, maybe all is council.
Yeah.
Just a list formal way.
Okay, so we.
Okay.
We wanted to look at balance. Mentioned earlier, is that right?
Sir, can we just run through this, make sure that.
Yeah.
For the minutes, got this correct, um just going off, uh starting with the finance and going down. I'll just, can I read out and you just correct me if I'm wrong? So I've got finances, uh Barry, Broughton and Reuter, infrastructure, all of you. Uh HR is Barry, Reuter and Abbott. Policies is Barry and Broughton.
Yep.
Uh emergency program is Barry, Reuter and Abbott. Climate action is Reuter and Abbott. Uh Curly Stewart is Abbott. Highway impacts advocacy committee is Broughton and Reuter. Uh. Parking and bylaw is Reuter and Abbott, is that right?
No, we we said we're gonna revisit.
Again, park it.
Yeah, we're parking that.
Park it.
Yeah.
Uh. Trees views landscapes. Barry. Barry. Ranger Youth has moved down to liaison category. Uh and accessibility.
I'm on that one, on the ranger.
Yeah, it's true, it was a community liaison for that, or council liaison for that. Uh but just sticking up top here, uh accessibility committee, are you parking that until you understand? Their requirements and.
Well, I think somebody's, somebody's gotta do it, so.
So Michael said you'd.
I'll, I'll.
If it needs more than one, then we'll have to revisit it.
Yeah.
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 Okay, um Lions Bay Beach Park.
Uh. Broughton and Abbott.
Broughton and Abbott.
Yeah.
Bear's farm. Bear's farm, council liaison, I've got Reuter and Abbott.
Mm-hmm.
Bird friendly Abbott. Lock watch Barry.
Yeah.
And then the rest are just resident.
Uh, yeah, okay.
Ranger.
Rest were just resident, we didn't have, although, did you go on the uh elementary school one?
Yeah, I picked up the elementary school and the First Nations.
We, yeah, we just, we said, then Michael be the contact.
Right. And uh. The events committee, they're, they don't require one or.
Yeah.
So council contact for school and First Nations, Broughton.
Yeah.
Right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Uh Lions Bay Scholarship, do you want to add that to the bottom?
LB's, yeah, Lions Bay Scholarship, Broughton as well. I'm just wondering if if there would be a benefit in. Having a, honoring these other groups just by saying, you know, that this is the contact, this is your contact. But. I put that on the floor.
Could put just contact, but they're not.
You, you.
Not really part.
If you have an issue, you know, I don't, just.
You can do that if you want, just sort of go pick a name for each one. Unless anyone's got passion about it, I don't.
Uh, I'll go on the events, I like that group.
Okay.
Uh but as a contact, yeah.
Okay, so Ken's got.
Ken's events.
Yeah. What uh do you, garden volunteers, which one, what is this?
Let's see, immediate garden?
Supposed to be the native garden.
Basically, they just, again, I mean, it's fine to do that, but they they get municipal grants off of this, their contact, they literally get. Hundred dollar check every year.
That's all.
But if they want, if they want to talk to a councillor.
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, right.
If this is, if this is the native garden, then I'll take that one, because if they tied in with the bird friendly in the old.
Yeah.
And that, well, I've got somebody who wants to do butterflies.
Butterfly way, yeah.
Butterflies, uh that, yeah, yeah.
We got that. So Vell's, Vell is on uh the native plant garden.
Right.
The butterfly ways is, we, yeah, we'll.
Yeah, okay, and and so she also con contacted about the uh being in the garden, being in the.
Michael, you run with all trailblazers.
Uh.
You.
No.
You know that or not?
Uh. Let me think of that one for a second.
Well, well, we jumped on this, what about the historical society?
Uh. I could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's more the group.
Well, you you go to the uh the one in Indiana, you live in with a plate. What are they playing?
Okay.
I'm gonna say.
Who does?
Marcus, you want to do trailblazing?
Mayor does that. Eric does that.
Don't you go to that event?
Sure.
No, no. I made this the mayor's.
We had Michael down for that. Did he want that?
Well, I.
I'm doing, I'm doing historical.
This has been, so.
Okay, sure.
And where, I'm sorry, what we?
Trailblazers, Marcus going.
Trailblazers.
Marcus, good, good, Marcus.
Okay, I'm not stepping on your toes, I had you in. Okay.
Okay, uh, we we saw.
The arts don't actually apply for municipal grant anymore, they're completely independent, so we could probably.
They are, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Never know, they might again, though.
Yeah, that's true, but he made a point of, I mean, we we buy the banners. Um, we made that arrangement to buy banners, but.
So I've got a question about the banners, they should probably keep that. We have a close session after this?
Yeah, I think we are, I mean.
We have it on the agenda, but we're doing all the naming in the open, so why?
I thought that was more for the naming of standing committee and the residents, but maybe you're not ready.
But we do have, we do have a close session.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, okay, but it sure. And it does not be overly long.
Serious, okay, so.
I've got a question for Pam in the close session.
Yeah, perfect, okay.
Okay, um, all right, can we move forward on, was there any others?
Who was guard, who was guardian volunteers? That was.
No, that's is the native plant garden, but it's not labeled correctly.
Okay. Okay, so that that's the, I'm sorry, that's the what garden?
Native plant.
Native gap, right, okay.
Is that just below the highway there on the?
Yeah.
You had a council council contact for seniors?
We haven't done seniors, no.
Senior skill. It's a fun one.
Marcus. They don't ask for much anymore.
No, since Louis.
We got, we got somebody for the garden or?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got uh. How do you, Marcus?
I've got one, two, three. Marcus has only got two, but my, can you hear?
Yeah.
Michael's got a bunch, Ken's got three.
So senior skill.
Marcus is the senior.
Okay, for, for now, senior skill?
Yeah, senior skill.
All right.
Okay, arts.
No.
And you don't care.
All right.
Was there somebody for our council?
No, no, we scratched them.
Someone's saying that.
They don't come for a grant anymore.
Yeah.
Did they liaison, is there anything they wanna liaise with the village or about, just to give them a contact? Doesn't matter.
Yeah, actually.
Do they?
Who is that? Is that um?
Buddha Phillips.
Okay.
Maybe we should keep them on, because technically we do buy the banners and.
Well, that's what.
And I know sometimes you don't connect with the mayor, so.
Good.
So that'd be you, Ken? Yeah.
No, I just meant, I wasn't, I just meant. My second thoughts about putting back on, um, there was often a connection between.
I think we've taken them off already, haven't we?
Oh, yeah, we took them off, but I.
Does anyone else um want the arts council?
I don't, I don't, it's not my thing, it was not a group I really. No particularly well.
Marcus?
Yeah.
I mean, whenever they need anything, they just come to council, like I said, like all of these groups, I think it's more like, not a figurehead, but they won't be.
Well, you may as well give it, you should not member. You're giving everyone, you remember.
You're a member, there you are, Michael's a member, I think, pencil him in.
You pay ten dollars and you're a light.
I think that should be.
Well, you're in there already.
Okay, all right.
Put that one in ink.
All right.
Okay, should put that on my resume.
We're done.
Okay. All right, uh, we're done, uh, we're gonna collate those or get a nice clean one, is there anything that needs to be? Uh, moved on this?
Um, we can't tonight anyway.
I guess.
No, we can't tonight anyway. Okay.
Generally, I mean, Peter can correct me, but generally now, there would be a motion to make a recommendation to council.
Yeah.
I know it's yourself.
Yeah. Um, do we wanna do that then?
I'll go forward.
Okay, second?
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, any new business? So there there was no new business, I don't think, uh, was there? Did I miss something?
Don't think so.
No, okay, uh, we're at the public questions and comments and we can open it up on, there was a few people online, um, Peter. Mind open up. Uh, Gallery, if there's any questions, comments that you may have, love to hear them.
Yeah, just a quick comment, I enjoyed the discussion, then your methodology of choosing people, I think you're um. Um, doing doing well on the right track. Um, happy to listen in, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, anyone else uh like to comment? Offer suggestions? Okay, uh, if there are no other comments, we'll move right into the closed portion of the meeting. Uh, do we have a motion?
Yep.
Okay, second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, thank you very much, Gallery. Okay, welcome back, uh, we have nothing to report out of the closed session. Uh, and we'll move right into. Uh, further discussion, and I think I'll hand it over to you, Neville, uh, you have a couple of questions on the metro committees.
Okay, um, yeah, so on the metro committees. Um, I was gonna mention the ones, and I think I've got the right one, the ones we currently are on. Um, and before I start, I I didn't want to, uh. Um, beyond any, I I don't have the time to go downtown once a week, or once a month, sorry, um. So, uh, yeah, the, I think we. We we spoke earlier about the climate action committee, remember being on the climate action committee?
Yeah, um, why don't you just rattle through the?
Let's mark, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Currently on on the indigenous relations committee, I might have turned wrong. Um.
Okay, and what other uh?
Yes, Marcus is on, yes.
Okay.
We gave you this, Marcus. Um, uh, I'm an electoral area, so it's just, we have.
Okay. And what was the other you you mentioned?
Just that, because it's metro board.
So just three?
Yeah, metro board, mayor's committee, that's you.
Yeah.
Indigenous committee, climate action, and electoral area.
And uh, there is some other committees, but they don't really, um, they're not applicable to such as the sewage and water.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um.
Electoral area.
Area A, uh, so okay, so it's uh.
Say yes to the indigenous relations committee, Michael, you're on.
Uh, yes.
You're on our one.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
So we're gonna continue uh participating in that one, is the?
We're gonna, we're gonna apply, Ken's gonna reply on your behalf.
Uh, sorry, so uh, we've got Marcus, you on climate?
Yeah.
Uh, indigenous.
Indigenous relations is Michael, yeah.
Michael, okay, and electoral A?
That's, we haven't discussed that one yet.
Okay, um. And. Like, just a thought, uh, if, um. If we, uh, we could put two forward, A and a B in case, depending on whether. They have, and again, if we automatically get appointed, that's good, if we think we.
I think, I think you should only name one.
Name one?
Yeah, and and these committees don't have alternatives.
Right, okay, I'm good with that, yep.
Yeah.
Uh, electoral A.
So that's sort of overview of the whole thing, right?
So electoral A is um, is the endowment.
Sorry, now the book is giving my own cheat sheet back. Um, I can just tell you, it's the indigenous relations committee meet quarterly.
Okay.
It has two mayors and ten councillors currently. Electoral, the climate action committee meets once a month, which is ten times a year, because they take a summer off. It has one mayor and twelve councillors coming currently. Electoral area A, same thing, it meets ten times a year or once a month, um, and it has one mayor and eight councillors on it. Currently.
Yeah.
So you can see they're all loaded with councillors, but from the.
Okay. So we've got, uh.
I'd be interested in electoral area in terms of the overall viewing of the, you know, having an understanding of the. Area around us, actually, yeah, we should have somebody.
We should have somebody on that, for sure.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, talking around, wait, flip a coin or you should as well, yeah, or we can both go, right?
No.
No, not less, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
To have a coin anymore.
Uh, Michael, you do it. Okay, if you're interested in that, you you wanna take it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, was that all there was? Just the three?
Well, that's the ones we're currently on, yeah.
And there's the mayor's committee and.
And the board, that you're on, yeah, and and wait a minute, is Michael already the alternate?
I put Michael down as alter.
So Michael, you might get loaded up here, so do you want me to take electoral area A?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Uh, I mean, I'm happy with this.
Okay, good, good division, good mix, okay, so I'm I'm C I C in electoral area A, Michael, you're indigenous and backup for. Ken on the board and and the mayor's committee.
Uh, yeah, you're not back up on the mayor's committee, I don't think.
Oh, no.
Not the mayor's.
Any other word, I think the mayor's committee, Ken has to ten.
Okay.
What about train?
Translink.
Translink.
I'm on it.
And do you have an alternative on that one?
Um, I think I put Michael as well.
Okay, so he's, so he's got a good chance of getting a bit of work.
Yeah.
I I don't think you have alternatives there.
Oh, oh, trans.
Okay. I don't remember, yeah, being. Yeah.
Anything we've missed?
Nothing major, it was more of an intro, um, the the biggest significant, uh. I guess, comment was. Uh, the West Van Mayor said that there may be a push to put a bike lane. Along the railway, right away, all the way up to Squamish from West Van, that was one of the the thoughts.
Good luck, but cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good luck, but cool, yeah.
Good, good luck.[1589.58]